Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or do we have? Okay, just a moment there. Right, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes presented? Okay, as you said, it's presented. Moving on to item four, which is an open forum. And at this time, we would like to give district residents an opportunity to add any suggestions about this agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to briefly to five minutes and any personal issues really cannot be discussed in public. So, don't all speak at once.
They might all be here for the presentation.
Ah, well then we will move on to the presentations. Okay, oh well, do you have a change?
Yes, let's move the presentations to the front.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're too quick.
Right. Well, item six is a recognition, and I would like to be able to do that. And this is for Wendy Pullo, who's retiring, and she's been with Truensberg for, what is it?
Fifteen, fifteen years.
So, I need a motion to accept reluctantly for resignation.
So, move to.
Second. Okay, so, thank you Wendy. It's one time to be a nurse. All agree with her? Any opposed? Or then this motion carried. Okay, moving on to presentations. So, we have robotics?
I'll put the frame around this. This board approved a robotics club for our high school in the spring of 2013, and they started up Roy Westwater, who's, there's some, here. Oh, behind the back. Was initially the leader and mentor of the whole thing, and they've had great success. And the leadership this year is going to be by Brad Farham and Jeff Holnick. So, ask Brad if he'd come in, and if Jeff wants to speak as well. Say a few things, show the robot, hear about this.
Good evening, I'm Brad Farham, and this is my cohort and tribe, if you will, Jeff Holnick. I'm the lead advisor, and Jeff is the assistant advisor for the robotics club moving forward. And so, you know, one of us decides we want to continue this effort. Roy and his son Max started this three and a half years ago, and without him and Max, we would not be here today. So, Roy, thank you very much for. Roy's continuing on as a mentor role. He is going to be mentoring me in my efforts, and he's doing a great job also with our programming team. That's his forte. My forte is the management side of things. So, I can tell you what this does, I can't tell you every single part and piece that's in it, but that's why we have these young folks right here to learn all about it. Because as mentors in this program, the design, the emphasis is on, we're supposed to guide these young folks along in their journey. It's a self-learning process, and as we move forward, hopefully by the time they graduate, they're moving on to something bigger and better. Who we have here today, we have Ryan Saraba, Katherine Hall, and my son Harrison. My daughter Katherine is on the Lego League, and she's in sixth grade, so I'm involved in this for at least another six years. So, that's a good thing, that's a good thing, this is being recorded, right?
And broadcast.
And broadcast. So, everybody understand what FIRST stands for. The organization we belong to is FIRST. And FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. I gave you both a couple of handouts. One is on the FIRST Robotics Progression Program, so I'm not going to go through everything on there. I've been given ten or fifteen minutes, and then questions afterwards. I also did give you a copy of our thank you letter that we gave to a lot of our sponsors and folks that we felt endeared to. But basically, the nuts and bolts of it are, FIRST was started many years ago by Dean Canon. It is a nonprofit organization. There are four levels in this group. FLL Junior, Finger, FIRST Lego League Junior is for K through fourth grade, of which I believe there's at least one team currently in elementary school. Then there's FLL, which is the FIRST Lego League, which is fourth through eighth grade. And I believe currently there's at least four teams, if not five teams, involved. Now, go back three years ago, how many teams were there? There was maybe one or two. So, you can see this, this whole FIRST organization is really, is really growing within the district, you know, thanks to all your support, thanks to support of all the principals and all the hard work of the previous mentors at those levels, okay? Then we move up to, and we don't have in this region, FIRST Tech Challenge, just because we've decided that with the amount of students in the Lego League and also the high school at this point in time, it may take some students away from either program at this point in time. The hardest part, believe me or not, is getting adults to help out. That's the biggest challenge. And if anybody wants to volunteer, we'll take your application. Hi, Ashley.
Hi.
Hi. Ashley Banzer, one of our team members as well. If anybody's willing to volunteer anything, you don't have to know anything about robotics. We'll, we'll take you three hours a week, eight hours a week, whatever your heart desires. And we are part of FRC, which is FIRST Robotics Competition, grades nine through twelve. With that, the whole intent of the program is, we take these students in, and hopefully by the time they're graduating and leave the program, they have a better understanding how to function as a group, how to solve problems, and potentially set themselves up for their career choices or college choices. In the words of, I won't quote Kevin Griswold, as many of you may know, President Kevin Griswold graduated last, last year. Joining robotics for me in high school has been my outlet. The one thing I could do at the end of a stressful day, and have something fun and really awesome to do, going to competitions. You meet so many professionals and real-world engineers. For me, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I never change. So, I know that three out of four of our graduating seniors are, went to, went to school for engineering programs. Max Westwater is at WPI studying robotics. Mason Bond is at RIT. Kevin Griswold, who we just heard from, I quoted, is SUNY, will be going to SUNY Buffalo to study engineering. And Ethan Hall is at TC3, also studying engineering, and will be transferring into a four-year program when he's done with that. Now, a couple of them, they had no idea coming into robotics what they wanted to do, Kevin in particular. And I'm sure Ethan probably helped him steer his, his way to. Max, I think, was always a robotics engineering kind of a guy. Maybe not? No? Okay. But the, the experience of this program helped shape them and really give them direction and life. So, it's not just about building this, it's about building their futures and giving them a real foundation, or a real, this is kind of what they want to do, this is not what they want to do, type thing, okay? Couple, couple of achievements, big achievements last year, our competition history, we attended two regional events last year. The New York Tech Valley Regional and Troy, New York, real finalists, we were a finalist. We were ranked number two in the competition, and we won the General Motors Industrial Design Award winner. And that's basically a, an award for the design of our robot. And this robot right here, with the lights on, is a robot we competed with last year. We also competed in the Finger Lakes Regional in Rochester, New York, and we were semifinalists. We were ranked, we were the number one ranked team going throughout the whole competition as far as overall points. We won the Motorola Solutions Foundation Quality Award winner, which is basically an award for the quality build and how we do things. Because of those achievements, we earned the right again to go to the second year in a row, the World Championships held in St. Louis, Missouri, in which we were a subdivision finalist. Now, last year, there were eight subdivisions, and so we were a subdivision finalist in that. And then because of our success and going to the World Championships, we actually had the, probably the most fun of our lives in being invited to, after being, we had to go through an application process, in which we were accepted to go to the Indianapolis Regional Invitational, Robotics Invitational, Indianapolis, Indiana, in July, this past summer, in which it's kind of like an all-star event. There's sixty, sixty-five teams, all who have been at World Champs, all who have done spectacular things. One of our rounds, we actually beat a couple of the World Championship teams, and one of our rounds, we came out semifinalist and ranked number two, twenty-two out of all those teams. So, when we say this little, little team from the bird is slaying giants out there. I mean, we are having a lot of fun, we're doing a lot of fun things, learning a lot of fun things, and being recognized in the whole robotics world out there. Without further ado, I'd like to have Harrison and Ryan and the ladies show off this robot a little bit, we'll turn it over the mic, and explain the differences between the two robots. Now, I'll just briefly say, we did have a rather, you know, one of my goals this summer is turning over my garage into a pit for the summer, is for the guys to continue working and designing and possibly come up with other ideas. Harrison and Max, while he was home, came up with this idea for catapult bot. And so, I'll let the guys explain that.
So, this is our competition. It's the bot we use in all our competitions. As my dad said, we did very well with this robot. There's, between the two, there's a lot of differences. This one is a double flywheel. Can you put it? Sure. Okay, so the difference is between the intakes is, this one uses mecanum wheels. You spin them on the axis, and it moves materials back and forth. That one's just a regular intake, just feeds it into the catapult. We do have a lot of realignment mechanisms in there besides this one. So, for the shooters. For that one, that one, as you can see, is very loud, and it. So, that's how that one shoots. The other one is a lot quieter, and isn't, yeah, a lot quieter and more elegant. It just uses pistons, and just goes like that with the ball, instead of using a lot of power and.
It's a catapult.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why they came up with the idea of the catapult, or Max was thinking about that, is in this game that we've done, they could actually have defenses. We played three-on-three, and I'll just run through that very quickly. And how this is all done is, in a team of, let's say there's fifty teams in an event, the first eight to ten rounds are, you're basically competing against yourself for best, best score, okay? After those comes the alliance rounds, in which the first eight place-getters, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, would be team captains. Part of this whole process is, this isn't just about the robotics. You're learning business skills and all this kind of stuff, because what you want to do then is what we call cooperation. If you're number one, and you can, like in baseball, hit, swing, right-handed, or play first base, you need a second baseman, right? You don't want another first baseman. So, you've got scouts out watching the whole competition, saying, well, if Team A says they can do this, can they really do it? And so, the scouts, you know, track all this data, and in those alliance rounds, you're picking two other teams to be on your alliance, and then you're working as a group of three. And part of this, this game this year, there were defenses. So, for example, the robot, another robot could be right here, and there's certain limitations, kind of like with NASCAR, certain perimeter, certain weights. The design is kind of up to you, but there are some basic parameters. You could have a blocker up here, and you see, this robot is susceptible to a blocker. So, if I'm standing right here about this high, that would block that. However, with this robot, this arc's over, okay? So, we just found out today, we made a decision to, to try to do this, and we have two upcoming offseason events. One this coming weekend up in Rochester, and one the following weekend out in Troy, New York, at Bolson Spa High School. And we're going to enter both of these in the second one, and to see how they do. So, it's quite an undertaking for the team, what they've done so far. There's been a few hairs pulled out, not one of mine, but there's been a few hairs pulled out, a few gray hairs, but this is, this is testament to what these kids have done so far. I can't wait to see what we can do for the next season. The next season starts the first Saturday in January. We have six and a half weeks to build approximately, and then we're done. Any questions?
So, is it the same game?
It's the same game, yes, yes. Yes, exactly the same game. This is kind of what we call offseason, where the, it's the same game scrimmages, the cost is nominal to go to these events. It doesn't, it doesn't really, it counts for a lot, but not in first. This is more bragging rights for ourselves, and, and to teach some of the younger kids to bring them along. None of these guys were on the driving team last year. They're all new. You know, we have three, four fantastic seniors who moved on, and now we need to, to refill those, those coffers, if you will. Just real quickly, just the numbers. Last year, we had eighteen to twenty students, and now we have almost twenty-four to twenty-five students, ten of them being freshmen, or brand-new students this year. So, there's a lot of learning going on, but it bodes well for our program.
I think it's also worth mentioning that there's a whole bunch of robotics going on in our elementary and middle school, kind of on the side and outside of school, and those students naturally, I would think, want to be in this robotics.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, three, three students from FFL last year are in the FRC team now. Yeah. And Harrison came through the FFL too.
Yeah, we got a couple. Did that for two years and then came into this.
I just have a comment. I have a, I also have a sixth grader who is doing his third year in the FLL program. And, you know, I think just, you know, the thing that we keep talking about of wanting to instill professional skills into our students, it's just the core of your program. The values piece of your program really speaks to the professional skills that are needed in working together and working with other teams, I've seen. And the way that you deliver instruction, it's all inquiry-based. So, you, you, students are given a question, and they determine how much hard work they're going to put into it. And because it's so motivating, because you're working as a team, you know, it's amazing what these little, these little kids are doing. I mean, to see what my son did in fourth grade compared to what he's doing now, it's just, it's outstanding, and it's teaching those skills that we want in our students so that they can be employable, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I tell you, as a mentor, as a parent and a mentor, I've never been prouder. As a parent, but specifically as a mentor too, to see what these kids have done the past few years, and to see, you know, the seniors graduate. If anybody wants a, I mean, almost say a life-changing thing, get involved, whether it's a couple hours a week, four or five hours a week, whatever it might be, it's a fantastic adventure, a lot of fun, so. Thank you very much.
Just one quick question, when you mentioned the parameters.
Yes.
And the specifics of what you can and can't do. Does everybody use the same ball?
Yes, yes, in this game, well, maybe not this beat up, but yes, in this game, had ever been walking around the school at all, we've, we've probably had a couple, maybe five hundred, a thousand dollars' worth of wooden structures that we built. There'll be a castle set up in the cafeteria for a couple weeks, so you can practice for a couple, couple days before the competition.
So, you can't tweak the weight?
No, no. And, and the weight, for example, somebody asked earlier in the room, how much this weighed, and this is about a hundred and twenty-five pounds. This one is probably seventy-five to eighty currently, because it just doesn't have as many mechanical things on it. And there is a weight limit. When you go to the regular events, I mean, you get weighed, and if you're a couple ounces over, you got to figure it out. Yeah, take a bolt off, change it. And one of the things that, that we've been very successful with is, is some of the other bigger teams out there use CNC routers, they're doing a lot of other things. You know, we were recognized, as I mentioned earlier, in a couple of our awards, we build with, with aluminum stock, you can buy down at Home Depot or Lowe's. We buy it differently, of course.
And our most of fit, one of our most sophisticated tools is a chelpsaw.
Yeah. I mean, you know, where other guys are doing CNC routing or welding and stuff like that, so, what we've been able to do with this is fantastic, so.
Once the competition starts, you only get to enter one machine?
Yes. Well, yes, as, one per team. Now, if, if, say, for example, there are teams out there who have done this, actually split her off a second team. Where if we had, say, for example, twenty young ladies, ten or fifteen young ladies, who wanted to have an all-girls team, and there have been teams that do that, specifically do that. I think we're quite a few years away from, from that time, quite honestly, but right now, we're, we seem to, that twenty to twenty-five is about the right balance point for where we are right now, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your support.
Okay, within one, we have Renee. Oh, summer youth employment.
No problem. I didn't bring any robots. So, first of all, thank you for having me. My name is Ethan Crampton. I am the Truensberg U.S.E.'s Youth Service, Youth Services Program Manager. I run middle school programs based in positive youth development, and I run a lot of different programs, including right now, coding program with a Cornell student, so right out of T-Berg, STEM-heavy, which is great. And I also run high school programs based on community outreach and involvement through volunteering, and college and career readiness programs, which includes the Summer Youth Employment Program. And this is?
I'm Kenzie Favreau. I'm a freshman, and I heard about the Summer Youth Employment Program, not through the town of Ulysses, but my brother did one through San Diego County. And ever since then, I've kind, I've wanted to be able to get a job, and I put in an application, and I ended up getting a job as a camp counselor. And I had never, I've never even babysat before, so I was kind of thrown.
In that what camp?
And I real, it taught me a lot of things, like responsibility, because I had no idea how, how much work it took to watch, you know, fifteen, twenty kids with two other people not much older than self. And I was exhausted all the time. I was filling out my own timesheets, keeping track of my own hours. I got to choose which days I wanted to work and to reach my one-hundred-hour limit, and I, I really, I really did learn a lot. And I think even my parents noticed how I was much more responsible, like, just being able to keep track of things, get things done on time, just little things that I've sort of picked up, being able to be much more attentive, because, you know, you can't not pay attention to twenty preschoolers through second graders. And it was a really good program, and I'm glad that I was able to be a part of it.
And Kenzie was one of our model, we actually had great students throughout the whole thing. We had, so just a bit about the program, and Kenzie was a fantastic employee. We provide formal employment opportunities for first-time working students. So, if a student was maybe babysat before but never filled out paperwork, or had a formal job, we provide an avenue to get that. It acts as a vocational springboard, giving students skills and experience to move on to further employment. It prepares students in terms of interviews, job applications, filling out paperwork, which can be daunting even for an adult, and it gives them experience in employment settings. The, the community shows, by giving them employment and supporting this and funding this, it shows great interest in the youth's future. It also shows the commercial sector's investment in the next generation of employees, business operators, and entrepreneurs. This past summer, we had twenty-two students placed in fourteen different positions. Placements were based on need, on merit, and also a combination of both, depending on what the placement was looking for. Placements included Full Plate Farm Collective, Truensberg Rec Camp, Floating Classroom, Paleontological Research Institute, Cayuga Nature Center, Village of T-Berg, Town of Ulysses, Truensberg School Grounds Crew, Truensberg Guidance Office, and Ulysses Public Library, which still employs three students. The youth employment program's future is looking bright. Students have been hired independent of the program. We have, have one student now working at Degannick, which is awesome. We have a hundred percent of businesses wanting to participate in the program next year. We have new businesses like Renovus and Truensberg Free Press, which want to join the program. And we had a nine-out-of-ten student rating by the organizations for what you worked, which is a fantastic average, especially for first-time workers. Just to thank people, I really thank you guys for your support. I thank Principal King and Principal Huckley for all the support and space, and, I mean, there's, I could not operate without you guys, and you guys have been fantastic. The teachers for giving support and space, I couldn't run my programs without having rooms, and everybody's been so accommodating to me. Thank you, Community Parents Board, for supporting our Truensberg Services and the Youth Employment Program, and, and just my other, all the other organizations such as the Youth Commission, Cornell Cooperative Extension, United Way, 4H of Tompkins County, and of course, students at Henson for participating. And if you have any questions, I'll be there.
A hundred percent rehire, wanting to do the program again, I mean, that tells everything.
Yeah, it's, it's fantastic. We've had nothing, we've had businesses reach out and say, can we do this all year round? And I wish we could, but it'd be a lot of money. But, but yeah, and students have, this year, last year, students had sixty hours of employment. This year, I lit, I decreased the amount of students and up the hourly allotment. I thought that giving students more time for more meaningful employment opportunities is, is really important. Sixty hours can be done so quickly, but a hundred kind of pulls it out all summer. And anything else?
I think the library, and we've gotten to the point where we couldn't function without them.
And the library's been fantastic, and as I said, they also have three students working there now, which will work till the end of the fiscal year, December, which is fantastic.
Okay, you said something that made me think, made me feel also I may have missed out on something. Who placed the strippers for the students?
So, the, the program is funded by the Town of Ulysses, by the, by Tompkins County Youth Services, and the Tompkins County United Way.
So, the individual employers don't have any responsibility for that?
They do not, no. So, they give the, they provide, so, some people can look at it as, well, the employer is getting free labor. And in a way, they do get free labor, but the training and onboarding that goes on when you have first-time workers does, and especially when you have small businesses where, you know, you have maybe five employees, taking on one more is definitely kind of a leap of faith for them. But every business that has done this has come back and said, by all means, please send us another employee.
And the businesses have a responsibility to mentor and actually help?
Absolutely, yes, and so in the contract that.
Balanced.
Yes, in the contract that they sign, it has points that say, you're going to help the student work, you're going to teach them about the culture that you want to instill in a student, and so, yeah, they really go through. And we also have our own training, we have our own onboarding. We run a, Michelle Wright, who is on the board, runs a training with me in the beginning, where we go over everything from paperwork to etiquette, to what's a good worker, to policies of sexual harassment, what you can do in the workplace to stop that. So, we kind of cover everything, and then it's up to the student to perform, which everybody did this.
And then you said the business is turning around, hiring the students separate from the program, so.
Exactly.
That's, that's the goal. I mean, in some ways, it helps them identify employees in the community, and then continues to feed the cycle, and then they get started and maybe continue at that company or springboard to something else, right? That's the whole deal.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's what we look for, is these private-public partnerships. Degannick's been great, every year they've hired one student, and so this year, they did so again. And, I mean, students are so full of surprises, and you never know how somebody's going to do, but they all, but at least this year, it was just absolute A-plus performances with businesses just, and I was blown away just through, I run interviews with them, and, I mean, you guys are just so articulate and polite, and get all your forms in, and it's just great to see young people stepping up and becoming young adults.
Well, thank you.
And, and that actually leads directly to Renee's work, as our new careers flash college coordinator, promoter, et cetera.
College and career counselor. And I, Ethan and I have found really great ways where we overlap, so students that have worked with him have come to me as well, so. So, students that have worked with him have come to me as well, so it's really neat where we find our overlaps. So, I'm just passing out the senior capstone. So, again, my name is Renee Alzworth. I'm the seventh through twelfth-grade college and career counselor. I apologize. I did not know what this spending was. Okay, so here, if you want, just take a place. Okay. So, I just thought I would update you a little bit on what I've been working on, since this is a brand-new position for not only myself, but for everyone here. It's kind of, you know, we start from the ground up. So, what I've been working on right now is the senior capstone, which I've handed out. So, that's the senior capstone manual. So, the idea of this is to give students the chance to either explore a career even further, or if they have some sort of interest in like a social justice issue, they'd be able to explore that even further. So, they have this project in mind, and this is the way for them to actually go out and implement that project. So, right now, we have four students working on the senior capstone. One student is interested in the complete teardown and rebuild of a 1987 Porsche, the 944 engine. So, he's bought this car. This will be something that he's not only working on with his dad, but we will work on finding him a mentor and getting him connected with local colleges or with wires so that he can really delve into this project. And it'll be a project he works on from now until the end of the year. And at the very end, he'll present this. So, the idea is that students will present their capstone project. And they have to submit a proposal. So, there are four components. They submit a proposal. They do the product or the project. They have a portfolio, which they compile everything that they've done throughout the year, and then they present on it. And so, they have to document what it is that they're doing. And within the proposal, they'll tell us how they're going to document it. So, the student Cameron, for instance, who's working on this awesome car, he's going to be taking video, and he's going to take pictures, and he's going to keep a log. Not only is that a way for him to see his own progress, but if he wants to continue with auto tech, he can now go back to this and reuse it, or if someone else wants to do that, they can go back and reuse it. We have another student who is interested in nursing. So, what she wants to do for her product is she wants to create a nursing manual for other students interested in nursing. So, students who might be interested in certificates, or going on to a two-year school, or a four-year school, or going on to becoming a nurse practitioner. So, she's going to go to the different area colleges. She's going to meet with four different nurses at each of the different levels and get ideas from them and create this manual. So, when we have students come into the office, the Student Services Office, and they're, "Hey, I'm really interested in becoming a nurse," they can go to this resource that an actual high school student created, and they'll be able to thumb through it and get some ideas and understand what the process and what it takes to become a nurse. So, those are some of the things that the students will be doing with the capstone project. Aside from that, we're also doing the internship. So, right now, I have six students signed up for the internship, one of which is going to be working with the Tompkins County Library. She'll be working on an exhibit that they're doing through the Smithsonian. So, the Smithsonian November is coming, and they're going to have an exhibit there. So, our intern is actually going to help, be able to help set up that exhibit and help show the exhibit while she's there. She's going to get her hands on not only the IT department, but she's going to be able to work with youth programs. She's going to be able to work with adult education. So, at the library, she wasn't really sure what she wanted to do, so they've been so accommodating, and they're like, "Why don't we just show you everything?" And so, she's going to get a piece of everything that goes on in the library. And the nice thing about the Tompkins Community Library is that it is run by employees. Aside from, some smaller libraries have volunteers, which is still awesome and great, but she gets to see some actual professions within this library and the different departments. So, that's something that's going to be really great for her. We have another student who's going to be working with a local chiropractor. So, it's a small-scale, private practice, so she'll be able to learn a lot about the paperwork and the education that goes with it. But I let the students know, this internship isn't the only way that I'll help you. So, she also wants to be in an upbeat environment. So, we'll also connect her with another chiropractic office that's a little bit more upbeat so she can see what that kind of environment is like as well. I don't want them to feel limited. And I also let the students know, whatever your internship is, that doesn't necessarily mean what you have to do for the rest of your life, but these are the skills that we're going to gain from this, and you can make this really meaningful. So, working with the students on the internship, we'll do one-on-one meetings. We'll meet in a seminar. But we'll also be working on a career curriculum. So, some of those modules include securing a job, developing human relations skills, understanding the laws relating to the workplace, understanding health and safety, opportunities for advancement, and also personal financial literacy. So, learning what do you do with conflict in the workplace, or how do I set up my 401K afterwards? So, not only are we going to be talking about it, but they'll have assignments when they go back to the internship to talk about it with their internship supervisor. So, that way, we're discussing it, but then they can go to their site, talk about it a little bit more. And then when we come back as a whole, they can discuss it amongst themselves, because each place is going to be different. They might have some questions, or why is it like this at this workplace and not at mine? And then we can dissect that and talk about it a little bit further.
And you're running those, Renee? You run the seminars?
Yes. Yep, yep. So, they have online assignments that they'll do. So, and at the very end, they'll put together a career portfolio. So, everything that we've done and all the assignments that they've done, they'll have it put together, and it'll all be tailored not only to themselves, but also to that internship that they've done as well, so to bring some real meaning to it. Yep.
And they're all seniors?
Yep. So, right now, the internship in the capstone, they're worth credit. So, we're working with just seniors on that. But we also have job shadowing or long-term job shadowing opportunities for students who aren't... Either they don't want to commit to the credit because they're taking a ton of AP courses and they just don't have the time, or ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders who may want to explore these different avenues. So, I have a student that came to me who's really interested in the culinary arts. He'd actually worked with Ethan before, and because he can only do the summer youth employment once, he just came to me. So, we're trying to find ways that we can work together. And so, he's really interested in the culinary arts. And although he's a 10th grader, so he can't get the credit for an internship, we can still connect him with someone, still find those different avenues. Then he said, "Well, you know, Ms. Alzorth, I'm also really interested in psychology." That's okay. You can come to me with five different ideas, and let's get you exposed to this. The idea is exposure. I work also with the seventh and eighth graders doing career classroom push-ins. I've been helping with the fifth and sixth grade. That way, I can understand what they're doing there. And then I'll go in next semester and push in with the seventh and eighth. That way, we can start building this career curriculum from K through 12. So, right now, that's what we're really working on. And collectively, as a department, we're moving forward with updating the K through 12 curriculum, also focusing on that college and career readiness, and using the ASCA model, which is the American School Counseling Association model. And with that, we're really trying to move forward with our efforts to create these individualized plans for students and to ensure that not only are they college-ready, because sometimes that's where the focus lies, but also career-ready, and how can we combine them together?
How many of you are there?
And we're also working collectively as a department to work on that counselor... That career portfolio, too. So, what we're doing with the fifth and sixth graders right now in their lessons, we'll take their exit tickets from each little module, and we'll start putting them in a portfolio so that once they get to the 12th grade, we can see any changes, we can see progress, and they have something tangible that they can take with them after they leave.
How have you found... And this is maybe for you too, Ethan, but for you as well. How have you found the community members that the young people want to work with? You know, being willing to give their time. It is a time commitment. In a small business, you said it very well, with five employees, taking one on, that onboarding stuff. How have you found the community members? Is there a way we can... We're the liaison with the community to a certain extent, so I think any message you have for... That would be really good.
Yeah. So, the community's been very receptive, so I'm very new to Truementsburg. And so, one day, I just went out. I didn't come into work until later in the afternoon. I just went out and started walking up and down the street, introducing myself, and getting these cards because, "Hi, I'm the college and career counselor. This is what I'm looking to do. How can we make your partnership?" Very well.
Did you get the keys at Little Venice?
I did not get the keys at Little Venice. So, right now, we're starting on... We're working on partnering with Airheart Energy, so I've spoken with them. Lakshmi Yoga Studio, so that's something that they want to do. So, it's been really great. And again, I'm new here, so any suggestions that anyone has or any relationships they have would be very helpful.
So, you actually just went in there and said, "I'm the college and career counselor at Truementsburg." And you had to explain to them what that actually meant, or did they just assume you were a guidance counselor?
Well, so, I'm a little bit of both. My background is school counseling, so I do a lot of the individualized counseling, too. So, Airheart was through the Chamber of Commerce, and then Lakshmi, someone just mentioned my name to them. I got ahold of her and went and made a meeting. So, anytime I get this in or get some cards or numbers, I immediately call her, send an email, and say, "Hey, how can we partner up?" 93 dot... 935 FM is that the... Okay. My radio stations are a little bit different coming from Geneva. But I have spoken with a man named Russ, and so they do a program where students in the surrounding areas can actually come in, and they help create a show once a week. And then every month, they'll make sure that the different schools, those students, get to be on air. So, he's coming in this Thursday, so I'll bring students down that are interested in that so that they can have that hands-on experience, too. So, really, it's just about reaching out, and yes, just going in and saying, "Hi, my name is Renee Alzorth, and I am the college and career counselor at Truementsburg. This is a little bit about what I do. Is there any way we can kind of, you know, connect?" And some of the individuals have already been in contact with schools for different reasons, so that was really nice, too, so I can both speak with the teachers that have worked with those community members and see, "Okay, what is it that you did with them? How do you think I can kind of collaborate?" So, that's kind of what I've been doing, is, as Jane put it one day, building my library. So, when students come, and I have all the resources, because right now, when students come, it's like, "Okay, how can I figure out a way to connect you with those different areas?" And I sent a big email out to the entire district, "Hey, what's your background? Who do you know out in the community that might be interested in helping with the school or that you think would be interesting for me to connect with?"
Yeah, this is something you and I have spoken about before, and the idea here is to be... The more people who can just hand you information, whereas it's not, "Do this." It's, "Hey, here's a piece of information. This might be of value to you. Maybe some child will be interested in that."
Renee's been to the Chamber of Commerce meetings a couple of times, and after the last one, I think you had to leave early. And she came up to me and gave me her business card and said, "Get her in touch with me."
Yes, and next week, we'll be meeting, actually. I'm going to go there.
And she actually has an internet business and actually does no business in the state of New York. It's all across the country where she sells her product. So, that'll be an experience all by itself.
Yeah.
You mentioned a radio station that wanted to put together a show. That would be a radio show. A number of years ago, the cable company in Ithaca allowed students to come in and actually finish their own show.
Very cool.
And that's Syracuse all the time.
A while ago.
So, I'm thinking the board can anticipate, maybe certainly by towards the end of the year, we'll hear a lot that there's capstone project presentation.
Yes, and you're more than welcome to come see the presentation. So, I've let every student know that has to present, "Hey, the Board of Education members might be here because we want to keep this program going." So, just letting them know that. This is really important.
The interns, are they random release times during the day, or is this like an extracurricular activity?
Yep. So, it just depends on the way their schedule works. So, some students who have flexibility to... That come in late, that can leave, go in the morning before coming into school, so they have later arrival, or if they have early dismissal, or some of the students may have to go after school or on the weekend. So, really, just working around their schedule and the site's schedule. But we don't want to put too much pressure on the students so that they feel, "Oh, I have to go in Saturday night," because, again, that's not conducive for them. So...
So, it's flexible.
My understanding is you've had with people from Cornell in terms of working with them. Can you tell us a little about that experience?
Yeah, yep. So, Michael and I were able to go to Cornell and kind of see what kind of outreach programs that they have. Like Ethan said, he's working with someone that's doing a coding program. So, it's the Art of Teaching is a program that they have, so they have a minor of education. They don't have the school education anymore, so students have to actually go out and teach a course as far as something that they're interested in. So, I've gotten in contact with Cornell about some students who might be interested in the career piece. So, having students come in and teach in the leadership class about writing resumes and cover letters and what it's like to be in the workforce environment. So, reaching out to them, I've reached out to... Well, this isn't the Cornell, but this is the Learning Web, which is also in Ithaca. This just made me think of them. So, I've met with Jorge from the Learning Web. So, they do apprenticeships. They also do job shadowing opportunities. So, at first, when we spoke, he's like, "Well, we don't do a lot of apprenticeships. Let me tell you more about the job shadowing." And so, I was very receptive to that, but again, it's like, "Well, I also want to know about those apprenticeships, because some of these students may not be going to school, so I would like to get them into doing some..." Because some of them go for two years. So, I would love to get our students into those types of programs as well.
So, I don't know if you know this, but I'm just wondering how many students participated in internship opportunities or projects last year?
So, this is brand-new.
Right. But didn't we have this as part of a goal last year? Did we have any students take advantage of this last year? No.
Actually, last year, this has been a work in progress in order to be able to find Renee with the skills and experience that she has, and unbelievably balanced energy she seems to have, to be able to put it together. So, it's... The idea's been there, but it's finally been given.
I think last year was a planning year. The capstone project really started to emerge and develop, and then the board approved this position, and then it just took off, because you've got someone who has all that energy and expertise and is dedicated to this work.
But I think it was... We used our time intentionally to be able to flesh out what we had, what specifically it was going to look like. And I really appreciate where Renee is going with this, because you have built in a tremendous amount of flexibility, which is not always easy, because you're keeping dirty hats in the air at the same time. But that at least gives us a chance to be able to see what works, and we're... It's, you know... We're now, you know, the baby, but we're cutting our teeth now. Was there a pan over here? This wishful thinking?
So, there's lots of career things that you're doing. Is there anything specifically happening at the college level that you're supporting?
So, as... So, the other two counselors are doing a little bit more of the college, but we're definitely elaborating on that. So, when students come in and they're, "Ms. Alzorth, I really am interested in biology." So, this is where the college piece comes in. "I don't know what I'm going to be able to do with biology. I don't want to be a biology teacher." So, the other idea is helping them explore that major a little bit further. Or they have a specific career path, but they're not quite sure how to get there. Showing them the different avenues. Maybe we start off with a certificate program, because you're not quite ready for a two-year program. Or maybe we start off with a two-year program, because you're not quite ready for a four-year school. Or maybe we're going into a tech path or vocational path. So, it's really helping them find a way that meets their accommodations the best. And I try to tell all students that success looks differently for everyone, and everyone has a different path to get to that success, because I don't want them to compare each other to anyone else either. So, as far as the college piece, it's really helping them navigate the different programs that colleges offer, finding what's the best way for them to get to their end goal, and also to learn how to make conscious and informed decisions once they leave, depending on which path that they go.
I think that's really important, because often, young people will get a certain perception of what the job entails. Having worked with veterinarians, they decide they want to be a veterinarian, because "I love animals," until they realize that basically veterinarians are pediatricians. So...
So, it's asking, "Why do you love animals? What kind of skills do you have?"
Right. You wind up having to deal with people. It's not just limited to. And sometimes, they go into research after they realize that.
So, a lot of it's exposure. It's exposure.
I was just wondering if at some point later on, we might be able to bring kids in that graduated, gone on to careers, graduated from Jeepers, gone on to careers, and...
That's actually part of my plan that I have, is bringing in alumni. So, reaching out to alumni, getting alumni engagement.
Precise, because we do lose them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think if we made an effort to engage, we could really develop.
And that's a nice thing about the internships, too, is... So, one of the mutual benefits is we have a student do an internship at this site. So, now, they've been trained. So, maybe they do go off to college, but when they come back in the summers, they're going to need a job. And summertime is the time that everyone likes to take vacation. So, it saves the employer from having to retrain, and all they can do is just update on the student of what's been going on. And now, they can hire them for that summertime, knowing that eventually they'll leave, rather than having to go through a whole applicant pool, hire someone for just a couple of months, then have to get rid of them because it's no longer vacation time, or during Christmas time, when students come back. So, yeah, bringing them back, showing them that they have a purpose here, and that they've really made meaningful connections in Truementsburg.
How have you gotten yourself known to students?
So, I've done classroom push-ins. I've gone with all of the counselors. I do classroom push-ins. Anytime that I get information on a program that's coming, I make sure that I put it over the overhead so that students know to come to Student Services. I make sure I'm out there to introduce myself as the college and career counselor. I'm Ms. Alzorth. I'm new. This is where my office is. Going out to the halls. I've popped into the cafeteria a few times. So, just really, it's a little difficult, only because it's not like someone has been in my position before, and they can say, "Go see Ms. Alzorth."
And the new, whatever.
Right. She's the new Mr. or Mrs. So-and-so, and they already know what I've done. So, it's really just trying to introduce what it is. Anytime Barb and DJ meet with a student, I kind of pop in, "Hey, what's going on?" Of course, if I can, you know, "How can I help you?" Or Barb, DJ, and Paul will say, "Hey, come see Ms. Alzorth. She might be able to help you." And we end up setting a time up, and I'll put it in my calendar, or I'll say, "Hey, I'm going to come find you." I've had parents call, so during open houses, really nice, when I was introduced, because I've got a lot of parents through that. I've had some parents come in and meet with me, and then I meet with the students, update them on what's going on. I have students that I, you know, worked with. They've had a job application. They haven't submitted it yet. And I'm like, "Hey, I'm going to track..." And I'm like, "Hey, I'm gonna track you down and make sure that you're doing this." Because, you know, I think it's great if you want to get a job, but also trying to build that relationship with the students too.
Thank you. Next, we have the math department.
Just turn it on. I just turned it on.
Oh, thank you. Good, because I was like, I don't know if my accuracy, if I was too confident.
If I could put a frame around this for the board, this fall, we're intentionally, and it'll last into the springal ways, we've intentionally asked all of our curricular areas to come and present to the board. And it's really, I really appreciate Linda and Laura and Scott and their effort because it's really hard to take 12, 13 grades worth of curriculum and compress it into something that's coherent and... And so I appreciate that effort. But it's also really important for you to get a sense of what we're doing. Because we're doing a lot in this district. So last board meeting was pre-K and they presented. And then it's math this evening. And I really appreciate the math department. Because it takes some time to put these things together for you. So without further ado, thank you Scott and Laura and...
I guess not. So we did struggle a little bit on how to get it all into a concise little presentation. So we kind of took all the grade levels and did a core, this is what we teach this year. This is what we teach this year. And then we added in a student sample of work for each of the buildings. Not each grade level, that would have been much. So we did each building and then we kind of have a little bit of a wrap-up at the end.
And they all have this lecture, right?
Yes.
So you probably, you already see it.
So when I consulted with each grade level and I just tried to show, this is where the kids start at pre-K and kindergarten and then how each grade level builds on what is done the year before. And it was nice to get kids this year when I said, "We're gonna do numbers. Uh, tape diagrams today." And one little boy said, "Oh, I hate tape diagrams." I said, "Don't worry, you'll love them by June."
But he knew what they were.
He knew what they were. So this first and second, then I put together third and fourth. And I have a sample problem from third grade that we just finished of this module. So the kids had to solve it with a tape diagram. And here's my little one's work. So they not only have to be able to draw the picture in the tape diagram, they have to, I mean, all the labeling and everything is part of it. And then answer, and I'm trying to influence them so they're ready for fourth grade that if the problem has words in it, your answer better have words in it. And then I also, fourth grade wanted a fourth grade sample problem to show how large the numbers are right off the bat that they start with. Yeah. But we're already, they're already working with numbers in the thousands. So... And then they also solved using tape diagrams. And they gave them a little bit of information. And then they had to end up finding out how, what the area is, I think, of all three of these parks. So they had to start off by finding what the area of two of the parks were. And then they had to put all the data, find the total area in the end. It is, it's totally amazing. I mean, I've been here a long time.
Yeah, I thought it was very, very good. And I didn't have one answer incorrect and go back and redo it.
My daughter, who's a physician's assistant, went to pick up her little one at daycare. This was like the end of September. And the daycare lady was, has a second grader that comes to daycare and was trying to help this little one with her homework. And showed this problem to Erin and said, "Erin, I need help. I can't." And Erin looked at her and goes, "I got a four on my AP calculus. I don't have a clue how to solve this problem."
So then we moved into the middle school. And fifth grade is the last grade level in terms of kind of that foundational, fundamental computation stuff. I think that's called the story of units, I think, is the pre-K through five. So it's sort of a wrap-up of everything that they've been doing up to that point. And then you hit sixth grade and that starts the beginning, it is the beginning grade level for the next chunk of kindergarten, which is the story of ratios. So that is why we have a second bullet, a large amount of time on ratios. That's probably our largest module. And we have a whole bunch of other kind of little bits in there that kind of tie in the first, that story of units with the story of ratios. And then we have a bunch of stuff with rational numbers because that sets them up for seventh and eighth grade. Which is primarily pre-algebra topics, more ratios, crossover to geometry and more probability and statistics, which they also start in sixth grade. And then as eighth grade, they keep moving in that vein there with the radicals, the integer exponents, and linear equations with algebra. And a little bit more algebra in the geometry. So the sixth grade question was coincidentally from a ratio module that we just started. And it ended up being solved with... Tape diagrams.
He hated them. He hated them so much.
So, and we were talking about this at our department meeting last week that because, you know, with the whole relook at the standards by the state and the Common Core. People are still asking me, "What do you really think about the Common Core?" And I'm just really glad that we finally have gotten to a point where when the kids come to sixth grade, they've seen it. And they have common theory and they have common strategies. And I can say, "Okay, so we're gonna do this with a tape diagram." And they're like, "Okay, no problem. I know how to draw a tape diagram." And it's not this foreign concept. And they don't get all nervous and panicked. So they totally know what to do.
So even if, even if it's flawed, the fact that we've been consistently working on it is getting them at least a modicum of standards that you can build upon.
Yes.
As opposed to apparently every other year when there would be a new way of doing it.
Right. Yeah. So I think that they've, I mean, the parents maybe don't feel it, but the kids don't. Or maybe the parents feel the discomfort because they didn't learn it that way. But the kids, I don't think feel that much discomfort. Because they don't know any different.
Yeah, your job's for the kids. We'll take their advice.
We try to do both.
Yeah, I mean, my sense is that I can't expect them to understand it because it is foreign to them. But when you stand there and say, "I don't have to spend time on a tape diagram" because they know how to do it, it's like the pre-K kids know how to stand in line. So in kindergarten, they don't have to learn how to stand in line. That's exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And I think that's the point I wanted to make with my commentary. Not that we need to take on anybody. But I think quietly, we've sort of, you guys have gone about your business. And now you're starting to see, when I hear you say that, that we're building on these skills that, let's stick with it for a little while.
Yes.
You need to provide a course for the parents so that they can understand it.
Yes.
Well, there's a lot of resources.
There are.
It's just, and you know, we'll be talking at a future board meeting about the changes that are coming or the proposed changes for the standards. But there are a lot of resources for parents.
I mean, I think a lot of parents who's engaged New York probably...
And they've been delayed again. So, I heard. Yeah. So I think, which is, I feel, very wise. Because she was certainly not gonna get everybody involved by pushing yet another.
We're gonna go into a black hole of Common Core. We're gonna let them go.
So that's middle school.
So I'm sorry. Let me just ask a quick question, actually more of a comment. So I think you did a great job of explaining what the curriculum looks like. But I think that, could you give a little overview of when math fits into the day? Like how, what time blocks do you have for math in the elementary? What are your double blocks in the middle school? Like when is and how is math taught?
In the elementary school, and I, I'm not, I don't know in the lower hallway. So I am only speaking for third grade right now. This year, we do math first thing. So my math block is from 8:15 to 9:15. And I'll be the first one to tell you that I either talk too much or not fast enough. I cannot get through a lesson in 60 minutes. And I'm usually, today, we didn't get done. I said, "Don't worry about it. We'll keep going tomorrow." But if I am too slow on too many of these lessons, I won't be where I need to be come the end of the school year. Last year, the way my block was, it was after specials and it backed up to lunch. So if I didn't get done, I could say, "Leave it right there. We'll finish it after lunch." And I don't have that option anymore. So it's really hard to get it done in 60 minutes.
And very similar in the rest of the elementary, with the exception of pre-K and K. They're doing 60-minute blocks for math. Kindergarten's doing 45. Pre-K, as we heard, is integrating it in. Elementary has that study skills, an hour, so 60 minutes of study skills in Schedule II. With the theory behind that, 30 minutes a day could be targeted towards remedial math or enhanced math. The idea doesn't always happen.
Well, and I do throw in math into our study skills block at the end of the day. But it's usually not from the module. It enhances what I've done, but it's not modules.
So in general, they get 60 minutes.
And you're saying, Linda, then, an hour's not enough?
It's not enough for me. I don't know. Maybe some teachers talk faster, maybe, I don't know. Maybe I'm trying to do too much of the lesson. I can't do it in an hour.
So you don't think little people want to listen to math longer than an hour, do you?
Well, I'm not standing up there, we're doing stuff. I'm not just standing up there talking to them for an hour. But, I mean, you know, they're up and moving and coming to the board or they're working at their seats or I just, I can't do it in 60 minutes.
I just, can I just interrupt for a second? Regarding this question, the elementary day is absolutely packed already. And there's, I mean, Linda needs more time there. There's a lot more time.
I'll have to add it, I'll have to keep them till 2:30 or something.
But I'm not sure that's where we're headed with this presentation. So I'd like to just move it, to be honest. Because we could spend a lot of time on how much math we're doing, but that's really gonna take us a while.
All third graders have, we should proceed in lockstep.
Correct.
Everybody has math at the...
Everybody does math the first hour block. Then we have an hour of specials. Then for an hour and a half, we have ELA. Then we have lunch and recess. Then we have social studies and science. And then we have study skills the last hour.
So the grade progresses altogether by individual teachers.
Correct.
And I will say, my question about why is that a good thing for another time?
For Jean.
Yeah. In the middle school, it's a period schedule. So the period's like 42 minutes.
Right, but not necessarily in the elementary school. I was thinking some autonomy would be had.
Right, no. So I'm just showing that they're different. We're period scheduled. Fifth and sixth grade has two periods of math every day, a period of math every, two periods. Every other, and alternating between that is one period of math, one period of social studies. So flip flops.
Okay.
Seventh, eighth grade each get a period.
Well, now we have to go back to...
The high school.
High school.
The high school, 40-minute periods every day for other classes. So that will leave that connection there. And I started off with the pre-algebra. A year ago, we went without a pre-algebra. We, for a number of reasons, were encouraged to try that. And we did it for a year with all the freshmen coming in, going right to algebra and found a lot of difficulties with that a year ago. And kind of begged our way back into a section of pre-algebra. So we have a pre-algebra. So these are the kids that the following year will take the Regents' Algebra class. Okay, so that gets them hopefully a year of high school credit. Since I need three, this is a good way for them to start the war. So then, Common Core, Regents for Algebra. And the way they break it down is by the percent or the emphasis. In the high school, it's the story of functions. So that's what our theme is at the high school. So we go through the number and quantity, algebra, functions, statistics, probability. We'll see those reappearing quite often. And then from, and we have adjusted geometry currently, the way we're doing it. So our teacher, Lori Evans, has all the geometry kids in the class, although some of them may not end up taking the Regents at the end of the year. So as opposed to in the past, we may have had a non-Regents geometry course and then a Regents geometry course. She's actually taken them all into one section. She wanted it. We all thought it was crazy to do that. But she takes them all in and differentiates within the classroom. And so by mid-year, well, she'll be able to say, you know, these are the kids that really aren't gonna be prepared to take the Regents. And by the end of the year, we'll get local credit for geometry versus the rest. We'll go ahead and do that. Now, last year, she had everybody take the Regents. I don't know that she'll do that again. But that's good to know as you're looking at the results. That is, all of our geometry kids last year took that as opposed to, you know, having some take enough and just having part of them take the Regents. So that's a pretty, you know, this is a pretty, go back to, we don't see a lot of parents. I don't think, I see a lot of parents at the high school getting upset about what can I do to help? Because traditionally, I've done this for 20-plus years, you get to the high school level, that's when the parents usually say, "I can't help them anymore." That's when they stop helping. So this really hasn't been a big change for us in terms of, we can't help them anymore like we used to. I do have occasionally, you know, parents that can, but it's not, it's not as commonplace as it would have been at the elementary and middle school. So for us, I think that we haven't seen a big change from the parent feedback. I think we are starting to see the benefits of having kids go through this. You know, we got the top end when they were changing to the Common Core and the kids that were the guinea pig groups that were taking two Regents, you know, taking the algebra, the old one and the new one. And then geometry, old one, new one, two, the old one and the new one. And now that we've made it through that, it's nice to see these kids have gone through a little bit more, have a little bit of better background in the types of questions that they might get from the Common Core. So that's a, again, it's a fairly traditional geometry course. The project that was here, Lori gave me was the geometry. It was a recent one that she did on a couple of lines. Now, you see this page? Well, this is the setup of what they had to do. The student sample she gave me. I don't know if you can see it. It's very nice. Other than the fact that if you read it, it says, "The Boring Town." Thematically, if you look at it closer, you can see all the street names were tied in.
Colorless.
Why she grass girl?
It was, this was a good size, I just took a picture of it. But it was a good-sized poster that the kids made and turned in. So that was an example. She thought, "This is a pretty cool one. You can share that." So that was a pretty good one. So that tied in all the different, obviously, I put the Common Core standard up at the side of what they were trying to accomplish with this project. So from here, I'll go to Algebra II. So we have a Algebra II class that will, in one year, take the Algebra II curriculum and then the exam at the end of the year. Some schools will refer to this as an Algebra II honors class because it has a lot of stuff in one year. To counteract that, we also have here a Algebra II, Algebra II A, tied in with an Algebra II B, college statistics, that allows us to cover the Algebra II curriculum in a year and a half so that the kids can take the Regents in January. So I have the first group that's doing that this year. Right now, I have the Algebra II B. I had the Algebra II A last year. And I have the Algebra II B. So these are kids that we felt like needed a little more time to have a chance. And the reason really we want to do that is because if you pass the Algebra II Regents, you increase your chance of getting a Regents with advanced designation. So that was like one of the goals for our, developing this class to say, okay, let's, you know, for some of them, so last year, I had two sections of Algebra II A. And essentially, half of them continued on. Now, some of them were seniors last year and got their third high school credit that way. So about half of them. So I have about 14 kids that will take the Regents in January. I think that the majority of them are seniors. And then for them, in the spring, they'll take an Algebra, or excuse me, a Statistics class that will be a dual credit with TC Three. So chance for a Regents with advanced designation, and that's free credits, a college credit. At the end of the year, it was a real draw to say, this is gonna be a really good...
So this is a change, this is a recent change.
This is new this year. Yeah, this is new this year. So we'll see, you know, how it goes. The advantage also is that there's been two Algebra II Common Core exams, so these kids that may have struggled a little bit, we have a little bit more evidence to say, this is the kind of test where I, hopefully I can use that to prepare them for January. But nothing risked, nothing gained at this point, because they're gonna have the opportunity. And my son is in that group, so if I'm doing it, anyone, I guess I could do it for my son. To convince everybody that it's a good, it's a good thing. The sample work that I gave was something from a recent unit we had done. It was, now, one of the things that we do with multiplication in polynomials, they use what's called the tabular method. Okay, so it sounds really kind of fancy, it was the first time you go, this is kind of cute. The real interesting part for me was when they did division, and they called it the reverse tabular, or as one of my students calls it, the reverse tubular. He does that, but he likes that. So we see something like this, the kids like to compare it to the old lattice, similar to that way.
When I saw this, I was like, "What?"
But you, but you work backwards from here. So it's really interesting, because you actually fill in the body of the table to figure out what we'll divide into it. And we also do long division, we do synthetic division. But I have a handful of kids that really like this, it made sense to them, it was a visual thing that they could do. They even do this one, it's really entertaining, when there's a remainder, which was something that, I was just at a conference at Bosse's with a drive teacher, and he was just like, "I thought at first this was gonna be crazy, and then it's like, this is so cool," the way it works. So it actually was, is a nice addition, it's something I hadn't seen before. That was my student work. And then, we have our pre-calculus, which is a two-se semester through Tompkins Courtland. So they do one thirty-two in the fall, one thirty-five in the spring, and they can get those credits that way. And then, as you continue on, for our seniors, we have, now, we have a group of kids, and this came actually from the college it was driven, was, we have a lot of kids coming to college who are not ready to take college math. And we're, you know, you're not doing a good enough job preparing them, or whatever you want to say. They're coming in and they're taking a lot of places, some sort of a placement test, Accuplacer is a common one. And so they would take this test, and they would score important enough that they would have to take a remedial math course in college, which means that they're not getting credit for it, because it's a remedial, it's a ninety class as opposed to a hundred level. They, sometimes it'll affect their financial aid, and it messes things up quite a bit. So our goal was, what can we do for that group of students that might normally be in that position to try to boost them up? And so TC Three has come in, and we actually give our kids in that class the Accuplacer to see where they stand. We go from there to kind of really bring them up to a point where, when they go to the college, they can take a credit-bearing class when they first get there. And we, to the best of our knowledge, have been very successful. Now, when you ask kids after they've ended the placement test, "Oh, yeah, 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 I'm good." We don't have the actual numbers to see that, but from their word, we've been doing quite well with getting kids into credit-bearing classes to start off.
How many students in this population is that?
This is currently a class less than twenty, so eighteen, I think, or somewhere about that. First year, for a couple of years through, we did it, I think, we actually had, we've had a couple of sections one year, but for the most part, it's just one section that is probably just under...
Is it all seniors?
All seniors.
All seniors, so out of seventy, seventy-three, whatever it is, that's a pretty good chunk of students.
Yeah, so we're trying to get, and that's one of the things also was our goal when we did this, was to get kids in math class for four years, even if it's not required. Because those kids that are struggling, the ones that want to take off their senior year, are the ones that really need to be in there because they can take a year off of math and then try to take a placement test. One of the things that they do in those classes, you have to do a lot of it without a calculator. And we wouldn't dare do that with our Regents classes, because that's a tool that they need to use on the exam. So for some of them, it's like when you say, you wouldn't believe it, when you add or subtract some numbers and they want to grab the calculator, and you're like, "No, you can't." And for this, it's great that you can say, "No, you can't," because on the Accuplacer, you're not gonna be able to do that. And so it's kind of easy to get them to buy in, since now it's becoming, you know, it's a money thing for them. Like, you're gonna go pay for a class that is not gonna give you any credit. It's an easy sell. And then, our other college level, or the Advanced Placement, we offer calculus, the AP Calculus, and we offer AP Statistics. Those are both also dual-credit through Tompkins Courtland. And then we have ten or so kids in each of those, so it's not a big group this year, but that's, we, somewhere in the low teens is usually where we end up. I think one year, I had a couple of sections of the stats, but for the most part, it's smaller, but...
Does it need to be Advanced Placement to give college credit? Or is that two things?
Two separate things.
So why are we doing, why are we doing...
So this is what, so this is what we did, we actually had done Advanced Placement for a long time.
Yeah, of course, that's a good one.
And then, when we, we had started doing, originally, when we did the pre-calculus, we only did the one thirty-five, I think it was. And then we heard another school was offering one thirty-two also, and we're like, "Could we do this?" And we talked to our liaison, who at the time wasn't very good, and she's like, "Oh, yeah, you just gotta add this chapter, and then you can do it." And we're like, "That would have been nice to know before." So we added the chapter, and we made that a six-credit class, awesome. And then, as we're doing that, we're like, "Well, how about these other things?" We already are doing calculus, which is like the basic, you know, Calc One, Stats, which is essentially Stats One. And we're doing it for AP, why not just have it do both? Now, for me, I know I've had students in the past that have done and gotten credit both ways. So they've gotten, they've passed the AP exam, by getting a three or better, gotten the college credit, and the college they went to gave them credit for both. They gave them the math credit for one and their general ed credit for the other. And so they're getting six, you know, three of them for free. And all TC Three things are the, are free for the kids. They just gotta put the time in and pass it. They pay a little bit of money for the AP exams, but, you know, if anyone has kids in college, they know that that's worth it.
Paying for sure.
If they're going to put a little comfort into it. Again, it's a buy-in for them, because there's some money...
Well, anything you can do to sort of not have to do that your first, your first two semesters of college. Freeze up your schedule like that, makes it much more advantageous in college.
With the Math II B, with the Stats, you know, Stats is also growing as a popular entry level. A lot of schools that used to do, you know, pre-calculus, the first one...
You need statistics to play fantasy football.
That's right.
So our last two slides are just things we're proud of and some initiatives.
Sure.
We'll do a little ping pong thing.
Our building, it's just the common language that starts at the beginning and comes all the way up through, so it just, each year, it just makes that teacher's job a little bit easier, so...
And the middle school, this is our second year of having acceleration in the sixth grade. Last year, we had twenty-three students in the class, and this year, we have fifteen, but that's all right. We're chugging right along. And the idea is that they'll be more prepared for Algebra when they get to eighth grade, so that we can get as much material covered in those, in those two years as we can. And so far, I think it's been all right, they seem to be enjoying it.
At the high school level, I think we're proud of kind of working towards, I know one of the board's goals, of letting the kids get college credits. And what we offer for a small school in terms of opportunity, even without acceleration, I mentioned that in there, because I think that's a concern, you know, you hear that, I'm sure you hear that, acceleration at the middle school is, they want to do it so they can get more college credits. It's nice to be able to say, even if you don't accelerate, that's okay, you know, that you can still get, you know, a lot of credits or so. It's a pretty nice opportunity that we offer here, it's awesome.
Yeah, one of our policies is addressing that, isn't it?
One of the board's goals.
It's color, board goal. Well, no, no, I understand, but in terms of being able to sort of make it more...
That was around the best...
Right.
Classes.
As to where we, their program, okay.
So the elementary school would just like to continue to look for and provide need for professional development so that the teachers are able to implement common concepts the most effectively that we can.
And the middle school, we'd like to implement some growth mindset into our math program, our math curriculum, our math ideal, so that it's not this, "Ugh, turn what math, my kids turn what math," kind of a thing. Because that is just a, it's a common thing, unfortunately. We'd also like to see a math specialist sort of be reinstated from where we lost it, I don't know how many years ago. The RTI services are provided by math teachers. In our middle school, we have an ELA person who provides ELA RTI, and she can do RTI all day. And so there's a lot more availability for labs, for kids to get ELA lab, but the math is a little bit more restricted. So, there are a lot of kids that still need it, but there's not always room, so it'd be nice to get that back. But we understand that that's not the conversation we're trying to...
And for the high school, I've mentioned College now a couple of times, if you're not, I'm sure you're familiar with it, if you're not, that's an awesome office over there at Tompkins Courtland, they do a great job. And they've been really helpful for us in a lot of ways, and the possibility in the future of actually things expanding from where we are, which would be awesome. So that's one of the things that would be initiative. And then the other one is, just popping up, is the, we're revising the standards, right? And we spent some time already with looking at it, we're not panicking in the math department, or at least the high school, I don't know about everybody else. But there's a few things that we added, but the reality is, they needed tweaking, if not even more, for the wording. And that's what a lot of it, as we're going through, is just clarifying the wording of things. There are a couple of things in geometry that have been added, but we're not panicked about it, but we are going to take the time to look at it, and it doesn't affect us for a couple of years, but it's something we need to start looking at, so that's something that is on our plate.
But it's not gonna change that sort of consistency that you're starting to see, it's just sort of tweaking it a little bit.
Clarification.
Might be, take this out, put it in here, or this is already covered here, or just...
Additional examples.
Some of it literally is like, instead of writing in a paragraph, they list it as bold, and that was the change. So when they, when you see, like I said, what, sixty percent of the things were changed, some of it was like that, it was just like...
We added a visual...
Yeah, that's, that's...
So, and we're actually, we're thinking about having a presentation just around the standards in the pretty near future, so that you can get a sense of what our teachers are having to look at.
Thank you.
That's a great presentation.
Thank you.
Two quick questions.
Oh, yes, of course, yes. Sorry, can I ask a question?
Even though it's just... So when students are accelerated in sixth grade, is there a formal criteria for that in terms of some kind of testing, or is that teacher recommendation? How's that done?
It's both, it's a variety of things, actually. They, we have a presentation, and we have, we've held, the last few years, we've held two parent meetings in the early spring and sent home letters and emails to all fifth-grade parents, saying, "If you are interested in your child accelerating for math as a sixth grader, please attend one of these meetings." And then we go through this big presentation. And then, anybody who's interested in pursuing that takes a request form, and there's a parent side to fill out, there's a student side to fill out, kind of, "Why do you want to be accelerated? What do you think an accelerated student looks like in a classroom? What kind of characteristics do those accelerated students have?" They turn that back into the counseling office, and that's sort of their, their ticket to the test, because that tells the counseling office, "Okay, this person wants to do this, let's put them on the list." And then there's an acceleration test, it's the pre-algebra readiness test that we've given in the past, but now they take it as fifth graders, they take that in June, and then that gets scored. And their score on that, teacher recommendation, their overall average in math, their averages, their kind of ability to stay in the B to A range for their other core classes goes into that. If they took the state test, their score goes in... Is there one more thing? Star, thank you, a star. Though we all know how I feel about that. So, that all goes in, and it's kind of like majority, majority of criteria, and we sort them all out. And then those students are, or their parents are notified if they were placed in acceleration. We always have some parents who want to just go in anyway, and so they have a conversation with the counseling office about if that's a good idea for their particular child, you know, what does this mean? Why do you want them in the class, yada, yada? So that's how that all works out. And then, last year, since it was our first year, we had a variety of sort of on and off kind of situations, because there were a couple of students who midway through the year said, "I think I want to do acceleration." And so we had to kind of figure what that looked like. One student did move in mid-year, another student wanted to, but ended up not. And then we had a couple of sixth-grade students at the end of the year say, "Oh, I wish I had done this, I want in for next year." And so they had to go through the same process that everybody else had to do. They had to put their request form in and take the test and all that other stuff. And I think some of that, oh, they also had to take, so at the end of last year, I did a final. I don't normally do a cumulative final for my students, but the accelerated kids got a cumulative final at the end of the year. And any student who was in sixth grade that wanted to go into seventh grade had to complete the modules that they, that they did not complete in my normal math class, but the accelerated kids did. So they had to do that additional work and then take that final. And so that score also played a part in them going into that class. And I think we added three, so Pete has twenty-six in his accelerated class for this year. So, we currently have fifteen in my class, but I have interest of one more student, or two, one, I think, that's interested at this point of going in.
I can speak at the high school level, how exciting that is to hear, because it's really frustrating to get a kid at the high school level that's been accelerated, and they say to you, "I'm not really good at this, I just gotta put into it. I didn't really want to do this." And to hear that there's actually a student motivated, you know, students that are motivated to do it, hopefully for the most part. I know you do have the parent, everyone's willing to want that, but that's a pretty, that's a pretty cool thing to say. They want to be there and to go, because that's, that's the kind of kid you want. And then, we don't want the kid that looks at it as, "I can get done with high school math as a sophomore," which we've had kids do, you know, get done with their eighth grade and ninth grade, those are the three years of high school math, and then they're done as a sophomore year. You got the kids that are wanting to go, that's what I think is exciting.
You had mentioned things, the RTI specialist as something that would, you feel be a nice, not a bonus, that's...
A benefit.
A need, in terms of the K-12 program, what are the needs that you think would be on that, if there are any? And if there aren't, then that's also good to hear. But as we start to look at budget over the course of the next four or five months, beginning in, I would assume, November, December, that it'd be nice to know that these are things that we're starting to look at. And it's always, I think, nice to hear from the ground level, unfiltered through...
So for, for the sixth grade and the fifth grade, and I, I don't know all the ins and outs of this, but I know Jeff Bridges was able to provide some math lab services to those kids last year, and he's not able to this year. So their ability to get math labs is limited to, I think, like seventh period and whatever period it is for fifth grade. And it's like every other day, for some kids, and it's, it's, I think we had a total, we did the RTI meeting the other day, I think there might be maybe two, maybe three labs that they can go into. But we have this list of kids that needs to go in there, and they have a need, in many cases, those students are one, two, possibly three grade levels below where they should be. And they need to come up, and they can't get that service for whatever, like, maybe they could get it third period, but we don't have anybody to teach it third period, because there isn't another person, because they already have resource room seventh period, and they're already getting ELA lab seventh period, or they're in band, opposite resource room, and so there are only a free study hall time, or there are free, that couldn't have been, could have become a math lab, is third period, and there isn't anybody to teach it third period. So they have a study hall, and stuff, which can be helpful, because a lot of times, some of those students have difficulty getting their homework done at home, and so then they can get their homework done, which helps them try to kind of tread water, but they're still coming to class and struggling because they just don't have that foundation to help them really be able to take what we're doing now and make it make sense, because they just don't have that, that base, which is difficult for them.
So is it both a staffing issue and a scheduling issue? It sounds like it's not just, it's not person, it's a...
Sometimes, and that's really tied together, because the reason that there's sometimes scheduling issues is because of the staff. Because that's the same thing that high school is gonna say, is we could benefit from, I know some schools are doing a laboratory for the algebra kids, and even something to do with algebra geometry, but we don't have the staff. And because not only are you limited there, you're probably limited in other departments as to what you can offer, it does kind of...
Well, because like you said, the student needs ELA help, they need help in another class, and they need this help, and hopefully, we can sneak this in at their study hall, so it's a complicated problem. That a body here and there, of course, will help, but still, that kid needs all that help. And when I hear you say, how many need to be up three grade levels, two, three grade levels, low percentage?
A low percentage, yes.
Low percentage, please tell me it's a low percentage.
But I would like it to not be any of them.
Yes, of course, we want it to be zero, right?
I mean, I, I can think of five, so...
And that becomes cumulative, doesn't it?
Oh, absolutely.
That, it might be three grades, that four...
Right, because those students don't, are not the ones that are participating in class. They're the ones who are trying to blend into the walls and not be noticed. Right, exactly. And then they're, you know, they're trying really hard for us to not notice, and we're just like, "Hey, you know." And it, and then they, they just, they can't do what's in front of them, so they tune out. Or we try not to let that happen, but there's only so many things. I mean, I've been to conferences before with high school teachers, and I know that I teach math, but I do not teach secondary math. And so I've been to conferences before with secondary math teachers, and they're just like, "Tch, tch, 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 tch." And I'm like, "Ah, I have no idea what I'm doing." I'm just gonna pretend like I know what I'm doing and write some stuff down, and like, and that's me! Like, I generally know what I'm doing, so, you know, and I teach math! But I don't teach calculus every day, so, you know, and math is one of those things, I think, any parent could probably say, "You use it or you lose it, you know, your kids come home, and you got, what is this? I don't remember this, I took this thirty years ago." So I know what that's like, and I can imagine a student sitting in my class not having the tools or the skills to speak up and to, to be able to advocate for themselves, so...
But we have added a math specialist to the elementary program, so is that a possibility? So is that a possibility that once that's going, you will have fewer children going into the middle school that are, that are not as adequately.
That would be a hope.
Skillful.
That would be one of those.
Right. So as we've got something in place in the elementary, so what we need to do is take a look at what we can do with the kids that are already there that didn't have advantage of that. Okay. Just hoping we can reduce the number.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or coming? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to, we have no correspondence, I think, that we have to deal with. Okay, the reports and for the policy committee, Michael, I'm going to, Ms. Michelle, who's the only one who actually was at the policy committee meeting, I'm going to ask you if you would just go with that.
Well.
That, that and I were here.
Yes. The first policy that we read through and proposed for the board for first reading is 7220 graduation requirements, early graduation and accelerated programs. And the, the language that changes here is around, is on page 19 of 29 in your packet. It's dual credit for college courses. We just add, John King joined our committee and we read through both policies, their recommended policy, our current policy, and we sort of weighed them both and we decided to take the new language and put it into our old policy because we liked more of our old policy than the whole new policy. And what we added in is, is very easily referenced, dual credit for college courses. That wasn't in our old policy and so we put that in. That's on page 19 of 29. Pathways to graduation, which is right below it. And then on the following page, page 2029, we addressed a couple of concerns that John King mentioned around advanced placement where sometimes students will take the course, want the AP designation on their transcript, but they don't take the test. So we had some conversation around changing that so that, and sometimes students take the AP course or they're reluctant to even take the test because they don't want the score on their transcript in case they score too low. So the last two sentences address that, that section on advanced placement. Students who complete the AP course and take the exam have the option of removing the score from their transcript. So we believe that will, that will remove a barrier perhaps to students who want to challenge themselves and take that, what we believe is a more rigorous curriculum. And then students who complete an AP course but do not take the AP exam would not have that AP designation placed on their transcript. So we believe that'll, that will discourage students from taking it just to look at that. And I've, I've experienced where students who are serious about it are sitting next to students who are not serious about it and that is not a good mix for an AP class. So the board can approve first reading and have it come back. It might be better if John King were here. He would explain, I think, just the same things I just said. The other thing that we talked about that has budget implications, Kimberly brought it up, is whether we should as a district to just pay for AP exams. Some districts just pay for the AP exams. So that that is, that removes that barrier for some students. So we had some conversation about that. We didn't put that into the policy at this time.
So any questions or?
I have a number of questions. So is, are we looking at talking about some specific wording here? Or are we just saying this is the first reading and, and how do we address the questions we might have on wording?
Well, what I would prefer rather than have, than doing that in the board meeting, I'll just say is to do that at the policy committee meeting because beginning to wordsmith will take us a long time to do this thing. And we'll certainly advertise a policy committee meeting, they find to everyone.
Do we feel like there's gaping holes?
I don't think there's gaping holes, but I have some, well, maybe it's not wordsmithing. I have some questions about the actual statement of what we're doing here. So the dual credit, my first question comes in the first sentence. So do we have a criteria that demonstrates intellectual and social maturity?
I don't, I'm not sure that we do.
Okay. So do, do we have it for AP courses?
I don't know what the requirements are to take AP courses. I just don't think you have the right people in the room right now to answer this question.
Okay.
I think a lot of that is run through the counseling department and they meet with the individual counselors and then that counselor makes a recommendation for the appropriate placement for that particular student.
Well, let me, I think, so if the right people are in the room, I'd certainly be happy to ask them. And I apologize that I wasn't able to do that in advance, but I think putting that sentence in there in terms of social maturity is, I'm not sure anybody would be going to college anywhere if they were putting that in as a criteria to take credit even as a freshman or sometimes as a senior or maybe at the graduate level even. So I have some real concerns about that. The other thing is, the way I'm reading the accelerated program, it sounds like that the first sentence says, only eighth graders can accelerate. And if I'm not mistaken, we already have students that were in lower grades that accelerated and.
True. However, it's not credit bearing until the eighth grade. I think that's what that's getting at.
Maybe we should specify.
So it's credit bearing in the eighth grade. Prior to the eighth grade, it's not credit bearing for high school credit.
They're accelerated, but no.
You can't earn transcript credits. That will turn.
Is that the state regulation? You're unable to earn it prior to that?
Yeah, I can't give a seventh grader.
High school.
Their science class and have them take their Regents for high school credit in seventh grade. It's my current understanding, whether they hold off and take the Regents as an eighth grader. But my understanding of it is that you cannot take a high school.
I spent a long time considering this. That's my understanding too, but I, I could probably find it pretty quick. I'll share it with this, share it with you. I think I can pull it up pretty quick.
Well, there's an easy solution. It would be for the board to not accept the first reading and make a back and we'll work on it.
Yeah, but this sounds like committee work, not.
Yes.
You've got to sit around.
But Gary, do you have specific concerns? Email them to us.
I'll email them.
And that way we'll be, and also the committee meeting is what, Thursday at 8:30 in the morning?
It'll be the, the tent.
Okay.
All right. So we will table this.
The other policy, which is basically a sentence of last June Regents regulations, is around diploma credentialing options for students with disabilities. I think in, in the broad umbrella around this is to make sure that, that we explore every option to help our students with disabilities get a credential in high school. One of the tenants of it is that the superintendent will review all of the programs, all of the students' transcripts if they, it looks like they might not graduate to try to find a place to help them graduate.
We've met as a subcommittee at the high school, you know, students that are at risk, they meet on a weekly basis. Paul Paddock and I have a subcommittee that's looking very closely at, you know, the targeted students. We had a conversation at a private board meeting that we may be looking at a cohort that has a higher, this current cohort leaving that may have higher non-diploma rate. So we're really trying to do everything we can towards that. I'm just kind of jumping in on the efforts that they've had for four years. These credential options aren't anything new.
Does he have a question?
No, I was just wondering if perhaps we have to insert each other.
Yeah, I like, I like, yeah. If we could, we've tabled the initial we talked about. If you've had a chance to go through this, especially Sarah, do you have any questions specifically on it? Because this sort of falls under available.
Well, I just want to make a comment that eighth graders is the first year where you can start earning diploma credit. I'll send you the link so that you can have it.
So that answers your question.
Yes.
Okay. So you want to add a motion to just accept this first reading?
So moved.
Second.
And second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or objections? Okay, moving along then. Facilities Committee.
Yes, I'm sorry, my computer's not working. So I, it died at the airport and I can't reach a plug with my thing. So, so, so we talked about, of course, a number of things with capital project stuff. The most important was, I think, the advisory committee recommendations and the process moving forward. We certainly talked about that. If you prompt me with what we, what was on the thing, Michael, I'm sure I can.
Infrastructure. And we have Michael Pliss here tonight.
Michael, oh, that's right. He was also a big part of it too, the IT budget for the new pulling wire.
Yes.
Yeah. So I mean, there's not, I mean, we don't need to hear from him other than we talked about that unless you guys want to hear about the nuts and bolts stuff of dragging wire.
Summary and Michael, you jump in if I miss anything. Of course, I'm a numbers girl, so I'm going to talk about some numbers. My understanding is about every 10 years, this will need to be replaced and redone. So I want it to be included as a budgetary line. The proposed plan is for $344,000 and we're looking at doing that over a four-year lease. Approximately $70,000 each year will be part of that hardware software lease and will return to us 65% in aid the following fiscal. About $44,000 of that project fee is not adable and would need to be paid as fiscal. So I've been looking at some fund balance and I believe we'll be able to move forward with this and we'll have a resolution at the next board meeting for the board to accept and move forward with that.
And just like everything else, the wires and the wireless, as Michael said to us during the meeting, is going to be a regular reconstruction. I mean, it's going to be a regular part of our, you know, operating procedures around here. It's, they have expected lives. We're buying the next generation wires that are going to fit the cameras in them and thousands of wireless devices that show up and hundreds of laptops and desktops that are here deployed on campus. So it's a fairly elaborate network with switches that they are going to assemble, we hope, maybe this summer, you said?
Very feasible for this summer, yes.
Yes. And then the wireless next.
Yes.
So the wired network, this, the hurdle is getting the payment in the first year. This is where your help with the fund balance gets us through to get us on a regular cycle of, of sort of looking at this technology like we look at a desktop. It's, it's got expected life of what it can handle.
How do you do?
You guys do great.
It's good, yeah.
Phone service.
Yes, yes, right. So phone service. This is the story of, oh, and he's here. This is the story of transitioning to a new way of.
Ron Boses.
This, okay, Ron Boses. This is another story of transitioning to something we used to do here that's now done somewhere else. And the story of a backhoe and a big piece of cable that got dug up that shut the phones down in the area. So the phone service system that we contract with at the Boses, Rick?
OCM.
OCM Boses is assuring us they're going to give us better attention. I don't know what else to say about that.
Monitor and care of our voice services.
That's correct.
Yeah, the day-to-day moves add and changes, changes to the system such as adding long distance to classroom service. Anything like that that we need to do is bundled under the co-suit for the OCMS going forward.
Yeah. And this is the direction we have wanted to, you know, school districts have to move is consolidating these sorts of things. But there's growing pains in, in making these transitions. So what else?
Lead testing. We've completed.
Yeah, so that's all done. So instead of the 1,000 mil sample we took initially, now we're down to the 250 mil sample, which is apparently preferred by the state. This is going to be an annual $2,000 to $4,000 line item of which it will be adable. It's not just going to be an unfunded mandate.
Source to help us with this mandate.
So lead testing, Joe has been on top of that. That is a huge, huge issue facing school districts in New York State.
We anticipate having it completed by October 31st.
So, and, so that was it? No, we talked about the concession stand.
Concession stand. That was it. Concession stand.
Concession stand, yes. The community did a spectacular job in raising those funds. We are probably going to have it completed for track season next year. It's been a little bit complicated getting sole proprietor contractors in on the job, but we, we are very appreciative for the community to get us started on this. And we will, we just have to expend some district resources to make sure it's up to code and exactly the way we want to be proud and display that at our sectional meeting that will be next year.
Soccer field.
Yeah, soccer fields ripped up and you can see the crown at work. With all that rain, you can see how the water is shedding off the middle and to the side. So presuming they put drains on the sides, we're going to be all set. If, if they don't, we'll need boats to play soccer. But that will be, I think they're laying the sod sometime in the next few weeks. The sod has been approved. From, from my perspective, a car company that, you know, works with all the professional teams on the East Coast is doing our installation. So we should be absolutely thrilled with our new soccer field next year in hopes that that's the beginning of a whole bunch of work that we continue to do rejuvenating the fields, getting them up to the standard that then they can take the abuse we're going to give them during the season with our burgeoning soccer and football and baseball programs in the, at the youth level.
And the last item that we discussed, facilities advisory committee, $30,000 view.
Yes, the facilities advisory committee, wait, the facilities advisory committee, oh, the one you've been meeting.
For the cap.
Yes. Yes, we had lively discussion about that discussion and, and looking forward to bringing that recommendation to the board.
December 5th.
December 5th. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah. But that's, of course, everybody's been working really hard on that and, and we're strategizing what's the best package to present to our community. But I will tell you, a big part of the discussion is the responsibility we have aboard for deciding what the tax implications of our decision will be. So we have to do some hard work in determining a number that we feel that the community will be comfortable with that meets some of these program goals. I mean, the Cadillac version may be too far to reach and, you know, the Yugo version is more than, you know, not enough. So we're going to find some hybridized version in there. And again, with the middle school sort of infrastructure and, and requirements for, to get it up to what we want it to be. We talked about, well, it's really good when you got 15 to 18 kids, not so good when you got 20 to 25 kids in a room. So there's lots of nuances to this project and it's really good that the community's been involved in that. But I still think we've got some work ahead of us. This is, I think we're just getting started. I think, I think I had imagined we might be differently where than where we are now, but it looks like this is going to be a bit longer process, which is good if we're thoughtful about it. The, the challenge for Joe is the next building condition survey report's going to be due right in the middle of our referendum. So this five-year cycle that we go through, waiting and delaying puts us out further and it just creates some challenges. That's okay. As long as we're thoughtful and we get it right.
We get input from the community.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, sir? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't think I'm done. I think I'm next. I think I'm the only one who showed up. How about that? What about for you guys?
And given the fact that we're a bit of a time crunch, can you be brief and precise?
I certainly will. If you give me the bullet points.
Athletics?
I wasn't.
Just give me the bullets and I'll.
Stay, I apologize.
Let me bring up athletics real quick. Unless Michael has it right there. Sorry.
I just need the bullets.
So I'll just start before I even bring it up. Athletic uniforms.
Wait, before we do that, athletics, the story is, we have a lot of wildly successful teams in the fall. I mean, just absolute volleyball and soccer, football had a good season.
Cross country.
Cross country. But, but to me, the, the thing is that the best story is the non-story of the merger. The fact that it has been going very smoothly, the fact that it's not a crisis anymore. We don't have a, a room full of people all worked up about football like we had to deal with last year. So, you know, I'm really pleased to say that Jason has handled that with, with real depth touch. That was not an easy minefield to navigate. New logos, new uniform, new vision. Kudos to everybody for that.
So real quick, stats, football, four and four record, Connors and Ferris Bowl series, volleyball, divisional champions, play on Friday for IAC championship at Watkins Glen, boys cross country, divisional champions, equate invitational win, girls cross country.
I wanted them equated. That was a big, that was a big.
Girls soccer, number five seed in sectionals, 11-3 record, travel to Unitago today.
We have 300.
That game was canceled on Saturday. That game was canceled on Saturday.
Yep. Boys soccer tied for divisional championship, lost the breaker game, number one seed in sectional, and will host Walton today.
Green. We got green tomorrow, and then if we win, we go to Oni Honor for the sectional championship.
And, and back to football, we have a four and four record, and we are playing for the championship of this Connors and Ferris Bowl Series in Yan on Thursday at five-thirty. So, our students could actually win that game, and this other bowls, bowl series.
Their success will do a lot of pushing for the size of-
We have news, we have new uniforms.
Yeah, 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 that, that, that uniform thing's underway still.
There was carryover money from last fiscal used to purchase uniforms this fall, and additionally, we really increased the uniform budget. So, there was definitely a need there, and most, if not all, the uniforms are being replaced. Championship banners have been replaced in the gymnasium.
And, and corrected?
And corrected with correct dates. So you'll see those in the gymnasium proudly displayed. And last item for athletics, the uniform closet is being cleaned out and overhauled so that we have better storage of uniforms.
Yeah, big kudos to Hach. He's, Jason has really been growing a lot in this job. He's doing really well. He's really sort of been doing everything we've been asking him to do, and furthermore, keeping a lot of things off of Michael and John's desk, which I think is an important role for that athletic director position. Jason's doing very well.
Budgetary wise, we are looking at equipment needs for the next budget season. And that's athletics.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Go, Taylor.
Yes, no, I think there was community or engagement, or we might have-
Oh, we're gonna wait for Michelle.
We're gonna wait for Michelle.
Yeah. Okay. Glad that, do you have anything for Bosse?
Um, yeah.
And Matt?
Well, that's why I wondered if we couldn't have him first, so he doesn't have to listen to what he's already been through once.
No, he's at a hundred percent.
Okay. Um, the Executive Board, which consists of one rep from each of our Bosse's components, is very impressed by, I'm sorry Jeannie isn't here to hear this, by this month's district presentation. She presented the pre-K program, and it, it just went very well. As we all know, John White advocated for this program for many years, and when I first began mentoring the possibility of a pre-K program to Board members around the state about seven years ago, I think it was, um, Board reactions were really mixed. I mean, the thought of a pre-K was too much, people felt, for kids that age. Many Board members, well, yeah, okay. I can assure you that after the presentation, our TST Board was convinced of its tremendous benefits. Jeannie and Tina Pritchard presented with Michael, who joined us after the morning's meeting, superintendent meeting. I think all who were present are really looking forward to another presentation from the same group next year, just so that we can verify the changes we see in the fifth year, the following year. Finally, Charlie Bergagnoni, who attends these meetings as well, reported on a Welsh Allen initiative, Welsh Allen is a major company in Skinny Atlas, on their STEM initiative. Two hundred kids from the area were given an opportunity to see what types of STEM jobs are available, and were actually able to learn something about the skills required. In the discussion following work experiences, there's a lively discussion between business folks and the school people over who had what responsibility and why. And it became quite clear that we definitely need better communication between our schools and our communities in terms of what jobs are available, and what jobs are available across the country and the world. So, a healthy discussion apparently ensued as to how the corporate world could support tech ed and work with educators to convince legislators and their governing educational bodies to provide meaningful work experience for kids, for high school kids, and in many cases, pre-high school, a lot of things. Exposure at least to available jobs, and what they're, and how they might tie in with their interests. Those responsible for setting ed guidelines tend to be very slow about responding to workforce trends, as you know, and, so we really need to enhance communication between the two groups. That was the upshot of that discussion. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or any comments? Okay. Then, we bring on to the Administrator's Report, and since this was for lead testing and Joe's not here, and I think the facilities is already-
We discovered exactly what he would have said.
So, I can-
We're waiting on the test.
Right, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Okay, any motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any objections? Okay. Carry, moving on to new business. Okay, item A is tenure appointment for Elizabeth Koenig, and I think you had a chance to take a look at the lovely letter that Jeannie wrote.
And then Josh's letter's on the back.
It's on the back.
Oh, okay.
Front back.
Right, that I didn't look at, right, okay.
Or the front, Jeannie's letter's on the back.
And the lovely letter that Josh wrote, which is on the back. Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any objections? Okay, welcome. Okay, item B is the authorization to sign a consultant contract with Aaron Battles.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, does this need any explanation, or are we pretty aware of what it is?
I love acronyms, but I can't figure this one out. What's E-N-L?
Ooh, English is a new language. It's part of E-L-L.
Oh, okay.
ESL.
E-L-L.
Those up and down.
ESL, E-L-L. So this is a recent thing.
Well, TST had a resignation, they're unable to fill that position at this point, so they're still advertising and looking into that. Meanwhile, we continue to have a high-needs English language learner at our middle school, so we were very lucky to secure Erin, who is an E-N-L teacher, Spanish teacher, Cornell really just Wonder Woman that lives in the village. So she's doing a couple hours a week.
That's good.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or objections? Motion carried. Moving on to my C, this is an authorization to sign an independent speech language service provider contract with FISN Class. Do I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any comment?
No, this fills a need that we have right now. Our staff is, Angie's worked with our staff, they loop schedules around, I think Jeannie's part of that. It's elementary school.
We have an extended, so we have two speech therapists, one's taking an extended maternity leave. We're unable to fill that position for the six-month maternity leave, so we've combined, you know, combined schedules reduced as much as we can. We have Lisa taking on about nine to twelve sessions a week that we just couldn't not service for six months. Trying absolutely anything else.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Motion carried. Moving on to Board Forum. Do we have anything for the Board? Okay, I found out that we don't.
We're getting close to anything.
We're getting close to anything.
The witchy hour, the witchy hour.
Right, because I, I don't have my magic wand to make you all go fast.
We have thirty-five seconds, and I want to ask Josh, what programs do we accelerate eighth graders in currently?
Algebra or science.
Foreign language, sort of.
When, back to Frank's discussion on the fac, on the Facilities Committee in terms of the discussion of proposals and that, one of the benefits I see to creating a new middle school program where we're connecting buildings is the fact that we could then combine that with our efforts to individualize students' educational programs, so that if a student wanted to accelerate in art, or foreign language, or, or music, or social studies, or English, that they would be able to do that because they would have access to the high school, and we could do that on an individual basis. So, when we're looking at both the fiscal responsibility and aspect of it, I think there's an academic component to also be discussed. And finally, even though I'm over, Dr. Madison, I apologize, you'll just have to wait a few more seconds.
I'm not going.
I'm not sure who's in charge of updating our website, but under the Curriculum and Instruction banner, we should update our Board goals and the leadership objectives to sixteen-seventeen, they currently read fourteen-fifteen, so we're way behind on those.[1756.16]